Yes, sir. All right. If anyone in our audience would like to call us meeting to order, if we can stand, Councilman Hucks will have the invitation and lead us on our pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. I would come to you in prayer tonight to express our gratitude for the Lord's sake and for us to always acknowledge you properly as the source of all of our blessings. And as we serve those that elected us to serve them, who lead us and guide us to do so in a way that pleads with you, our government, our state, and our...
...back of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, David. All right, first item on our agenda is our audience for visitors. If there's anyone in our audience, we'd like to address council on any issue. We'd be delighted to hear from you at this time. Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. Does someone have a motion, please?
May I move that we approve the minutes of our regular session of October 11th, 2022?
All right, we have a motion made and second that we approve the minutes from October 11th, 2022. Any concerns, any comments, additions to the minutes? If not, Ms. Kim?
Councilman Thye. Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Hucks.
Aye.
Mayor Hessel. Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thanks, Kim. Item E on our agenda is a public hearing. It is the only public hearing tonight. It's an ordinance amending Appendix B subdivisions regulate the preparation, review, and approval or disapproval of preliminary plaits, development plans, and final plaits to provide for the administration and enforcement of the ordinance and for amendments thereto and to prescribe penalties for the violation of its provisions. Mr. Wheeler?
Mr. Horton will present on behalf of staff, sir.
Okay. Wally?
Thank you very much.
You're already up there, okay.
And good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
You do have before you, you said a mouthful, so I won't reread that. But basically, these are, these are, this change is pursuant to strategy number 21 in the 2018-2038 Comprehensive Plan, which states on page 8-18 that the city needs to, quote, "review and update city zoning subdivision site plan and site ordinances to ensure coherence, clarity, and compliance with current law and development practices," unquote. So these proposed changes are in regard to the subdivision ordinance, as the mayor pointed out. And there is draft text that includes in a rather long motion. We'll try to do something about that going forward because I realize it's rather long. Staff has had the language thoroughly vetted through the city attorney and the city manager. Staff has attempted to live the changes to formatting and legal issues. The formatting in particular has resulted in an ordinance that has consistency in lettering and numbering, corrected spacing throughout the document, and verified grammar, none of which really changes any meaning within the document, but it's nice to have. And I will point out at this point that it's been a team effort getting the grammar corrected, certainly not just me. And in fact, there was a lot of items in the old ordinance that had to be corrected along with the new changes that we've made. The Planning Commission on October 17th, 2022 did vote four to zero to recommend this amendment for approval. The motion that you have with you has the changed language in black, bold, and underlined, and strike through indicates text that's been deleted or perhaps moved. If I could just expound a little bit on some of the changes. I don't want to take up a lot of time because I'm sure you have questions, and I'll be happy to take those. But we did do some changes to the definitions. We better define the agent. Your agent is Mr. Wheeler, the city manager. Unless the city council should choose another person to act as the subdivision agent. So it is the city manager by default. We carried over a few definitions in the zoning ordinance. You'll notice we had a definition of green area, and that's basically in regard to calculating stormwater. So we carried over the landscaping that we changed in the zoning ordinance back when we did the plan unit development ordinances. The big change, at least to my mind, is that what we previously called definitional exceptions are now divisions. So you'll notice there's a definition of divisions in the ordinance. Actually, definitional exceptions were not defined, so we've defined divisions. Really, they operate the same as definitional exceptions. The only changes, and this is in 7.1 and 7.2 that we've made, or 7.1 really more so, 7.2 is family subdivisions. Really, the only change we've made there is to acknowledge that there are some state and federal requirements, as well as our own, that need to be adhered to. And y'all know as well as I do, if not better, that DEQ and other agencies occasionally put requirements on us that we have to honor, what we have to carry through. Did some changes to preliminary plaits. Big state code differences there. For lots of 50 or less, a preliminary plat is actually not required, but it, but we have to make it an option that somebody can choose if they want to. So that's in Article 5. And I think everything else is pretty much straightforward. I'll be certainly more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
Well, thank you very much. Well done. Any questions, Wally? Okay. Reid?
Just a couple of comments, not really a question. And while he hit on the first one, but I just want to articulate it one more time. The city manager has always been by title your subdivision ordinance or your subdivision agent, as well as your zoning administrator. And what this does is sets forward the ability in the future for you to name someone else with the city manager being the default. If there's not a person named by council, then it will be the manager. But there will come a time in the future where we likely will grow to where we'll need a subdivision agent and/or a zoning administrator who's not your manager. We're setting the groundwork for the future. One of the things that we try to do in our ordinances to the greatest extent possible is make it so that if a citizen is going to it to try to understand what he or she needs to do, that it's all in one place. And so additions that Wally's talking about, particularly in the small subdivisions, which may be more, less of a Ryan Holmes kind of thing and more of a two or three-lap small developer in which, you know, the person who's the owner might actually be a developer. So the language about the requirements for the state and federal is there so that if they just pick that up, they know there's other things they need to look towards. Everything else, if it's not a formatting or a Scrivener's Error kind of change, the number of, it's an older ordinance, and we had, there were plenty of those things that we needed to correct. Everything else is to conform with current state code and our current practice, which evolved as the state code has, but it's been a while since we've changed this ordinance. Mr. Horton was talking about small subdivisions. Used to be able to require, you know, preliminary plans. Now you can't by state code. So that's an example of the kind of thing. While you correct me if I'm wrong, but there is, there is no substantial departure from the current way we do things, except that we're just updating the legal references, making sure that as you work through your other ordinances, whether it's PUD or side plan, that as you amend ordinances, we capture those amended definitions and roll them forward so that when we're done with this, you should be able to see the exact same word, same definition across the four ordinances.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I did have one question. Well, I guess what I saw, and this is, no, doesn't require a lot of work, hopefully, I just noticed that the public notice required has been removed. Was it moved anywhere else or is it just not there anymore?
Oh, the public notice for the preliminary plat that used to go to Planning Commission and City Council under the old order, there would be a paper notification, but now there will not be. There's not one required.
Okay.
Before agent review.
Okay.
Any other questions, Wally? Any questions, the manager? Okay. Not welcome to public hearing. Has anyone yet would like to speak either for or against this ordinance recommendation? Seeing none, closed public hearing. Ask for a motion.
May I move that we adopt an ordinance amending Appendix B subdivisions to regulate the preparation, review, and approval or disapproval of preliminary plaits, development plans, and final plaits to provide for the administration and enforcement of the ordinance and for amendments thereto and to prescribe penalties for violations of...
Okay, thank you, buddy. Second. All right, the motion remains second that we adopt the ordinance. Any concerns, comments, any other questions? If not, Ms. Kim, please.
Councilman Hucks.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Thye.
Aye.
Mayor Hessel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thanks, Kim. Item F, new business. First item in ordinance, making additional appropriations for fiscal year 2023 for general fund employee retention pay, public safety market adjustment, and building maintenance. Mr. Wheeler?
Thanks, sir. Members of council, Mr. Mayor. The item before you tonight is a request to consider appropriation from the general fund balance. These are funds that were left over at the last fiscal year. They are in excess of our financial, underlying financial guidelines, and our general practice is that we save some of the money that we accumulate on those years where we're fortunate to do so, which has been, I believe, every year since I've been here. But we look for opportunities to invest a fortune, which, that's roughly a two-thirds, one-third breakout, but that is a rule of thumb, and you could go in either direction as council. You're not bound in any way by that rule of thumb. There are three components and then a fourth, and if it's all right, I'll go backwards. The fourth is just a note to remind the public and council that last year in March, the commissioner brought to you, and you ultimately approved, a reduction in the ratio that we apply the personal property taxes to, 100% to 90, and that was given the extraordinary increases in values for both new cars, which were really hard to find, and used cars, which went up in part, in large part because of the problems with the new cars. We anticipate bringing an item back to you in the February-March timeframe again for next year. Reminder, personal property is taxed on a calendar year basis, and we budget on a fiscal year basis, so this sort of straddles fiscal year. So we're going to bring that back to you for your consideration. I anticipate that we will bring a level of reduction for your consideration, at least what we did last year, as long as this super-hot market. It's come down a little bit, but it's still substantially higher than what would be normal. We don't get the information from NADA and Kelly Blue Book and various other sources of commission months from now, which is why we can't do it early. We can't do the math yet, but we will and we anticipate doing that. So I just wanted to articulate that for the public. There are three items for appropriation for your consideration this evening. The smallest of the three, we are requesting your consideration to transfer for money to our building maintenance fund. Each year, you appropriate a certain amount of money for routine building maintenance, routine equipment replacement relating to building systems. And this year, we had the city hall boiler just completely go down, and we are in the process of replacing that. That work actually started in earnest today. It'll take a week to two weeks to be finished, but we had sufficient money in that budget line item to do it, but that'd take pretty much everything we had. So we're asking for your consideration to refill it. The approximate cost of the project is $65,000, and that's what we're asking you to consider this evening. There are two other elements, both larger financially. The issue here, we used to talk about an applicant pool. Well, if you'll forgive me, I now think of it more as an applicant stream than a pool. The reason for that is because it's constantly in motion, but it's easier for this analogy. The stream is getting narrower and shallower, and we're seeing that as are all of the other employers, including local governments in our area. And one of the ways to protect yourself from vacancies is to really focus on your existing people and the retention of the great people that are already doing a good job for you. And that is essentially our entire workforce, in my opinion. So what I'm asking you to do is to consider making a retention, establish a retention award program, and if you approve it as presented, for those employees that have been with us for more than a year and have completed their initial employee probation, those permanent full-time employees, I'm asking you to consider a $2,000 performance retention award, which would be provided, subject to your approval, of course, in the month of December. What's a little different about this and the way we've done similar types of things in the past is we're asking you to consider sort of making this a permanent program. So let's say a relatively new employee, maybe he or she's only been here for two months, they would be eligible for that award at the end of their 12 months, once they've successfully come off of their initial probation period. And additionally, we'd like to make this a continual thing, so someone that may be hired three years from now, when he or she completes their initial one year and their new hire probationary period, they'd be eligible for the same thing. You know, at the end of that first year, employees have gained a lot in terms of their applied skills and abilities, but at one year, they're also kind of almost the most marketable recruit-away spot. So, but we can't, we can't do everything. We thought that this was a significant indicator to folks that we appreciate the work that they're doing and would like to continue to do that in the future. The memo also speaks to define smaller amounts for our permanent part-time employees. I won't go into that, but it's here in your package. They're not left out of this either, and it would apply to all of our employees that are eligible, meaning, the next item I'm going to talk about is a recommendation pertaining to public safety. I just want to be clear that the retention award program includes the public safety agencies. They're not, it's not an either-or in the recommendation. The last item, and I'll recap the money when I'm finished, but the last item is a mid-year adjustment to a public safety pay structure. Over the last several years, well, I talked about the fact that the stream is getting narrower and shallower. And that's absolutely true. But nowhere for us is it getting more narrow and more shallow right now than police, local police officers. We see that in the news in Hampton Roads all the time. There, some of our, the folks on the south side have multiple hundreds of vacancies. They're also paying more than we are. They're also, in some cases, providing signing bonuses and other incentives. And in particularly, this isn't new, but it's picked up particularly since the 1st of July, the localities on our side of the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel, responding in part to the interface with the greater Richmond region and also pressure from the south side, have begun, it began with New Kent and then James City County and Williamsburg. York County recently did something, and I'm not quite sure what Hampton and Newport News are going to do, but I've been told they're planning to do something. So what I'm suggesting, asking you to consider is taking an action to increase our starting pay for both police officers and fire and EMS from its current amount, which is something slightly less than $46,000, and increase it to $48,000. And in recognition of sort of where we are in the market, I'm also suggesting and asking you to consider making that same dollar amount in terms of a permanent salary change for all those folks below the level of chief, that there are sworn personnel for us, both in police and in fire. If we didn't take care of those people as well that are already with us, we really run the risk of exacerbating our existing retention, excuse me, compression problem, as well as not helping to address any way the, our market condition as it relates to our current employees as well. Not only do we have difficulty, as we all do, in attracting qualified applicants, but increasingly, the private sector, state and local and federal, but I'll set local to the side, private, federal, and state efforts to recruit local police officers away from local policing is increasing at a rate I've not seen. And so it's not just competition with other local police officers. It's military bases, it's Department of Juvenile Justice, and it's some people who just want to leave the profession. I don't think we're done, but it is what I think we can afford. It is sustainable, unlike the retention award. This is a proposal for a permanent salary change. $2,160? I get the $1640 backwards. I got it right once. Okay. So that's what I'm asking you to do. And if you take those three items together, the employee retention award, we estimate the cost of that in the current year, which would be a one-time cost largely, although I did note there would be continuing costs for employees that would be coming off of probation in the future, is $320,000. The public safety market study or market adjustment, current fiscal year cost, because it would be a partial year, is $102,000. I believe the full year estimated cost, so the cost that will roll into next fiscal year's budget's $165,000, and building maintenance is $65,000, for a grand total of $487,000. That $487,000, as council knows, comes as a subset of our increased fund balance, which was approximately $900,000. So should you approve this, by this action, you will be allocating approximately $500,000 of that $900,000. I would also note to you that the money that we approved for the vehicle and in gear for second SRO position, we'll also pull against that. You've already done that, but fund balance is calculated in a point of time, so this $900,000 is relative to the June 30 point in time. I'd be pleased to answer any questions. Toni's here. She can answer details that I can't. Both of the public safety chiefs are here. If you would like to ask them a question.
Thank you, Randy. Questions of, uh, Gwaki?
Yeah, one question on the employee retention program. Is that something that the supervisors would approve or would be through you, the agent, or the manager, or how's that?
It would, it would essentially be through our office. When a person is done with their first year of employment, I'm talking about permanent full-time people, they go through it and then they go through a performance review process, which ultimately ends with them formally coming off of probation. And the people that have already been here for a year, more than a year, we just kind of check that box and go on, but as we go into the future, we will formalize, in fact, we already have, that written finding that they performed appropriately. There are times, for example, during probation where it doesn't work out, when you have to separate, or maybe there's something, still a bit of a work in progress, and we extend their probation, at which point they would become eligible at the end of that, assuming that they satisfactorily got off probation.
And Randy, I have one question. These things conform positively with our annual audit report?
Yes, sir. The $900,000 that I referenced in terms of addition to general fund balance is essentially the number you will see when we get the budget presented to you at the next meeting, and in full conformance with our fiscal management guidelines and in recognition of the extra things we need to do to maintain our AAA bond rating.
Thank you.
For the people who get the retention bonus, is there any requirement, once they receive it, to stay under employment for certain time to ensure that people don't get the retention bonus?
There is nothing in the program as presented. The vast majority of those have already been with us. If that's something that council is interested in, we could look, we could look into that, but not as presented.
Because I, just like in my experience in the private sector, that's what we do. Like you have to stay a year after you get your bonus. Don't stay the year, then you have to pay that bonus back.
Well, in this particular, in this particular case, they have stayed their year already, but certainly if council wishes to make a modification, we're, we stand by to make whatever changes council thinks may be.
My concern is that they would get the bonus and then leave anyway, and then retention bonus isn't really retaining them.
It's not retention bonus, it's an award.
Basically, an award for staying with us.
Staying just the one year, and then we don't...
In most cases, it'll be considerably more than...
Right, hopefully, yeah.
But yes, ma'am, you're right.
Okay.
And so if council wanted to modify that, we'd be welcome. We would entertain any language council would like to suggest.
We are training a lot of people for surrounding communities. Maybe this would help stop some of that.
That's a good idea.
I believe that the combination of the two things will help, particularly for public safety. And as you know, at the moment, it's police is our issue, but in different times in my career, it's been EMS was, when I worked in the edge of Northern Virginia, EMS was the real difficult hiring retention issue. So it does change, and we have always recognized that the public safety is one unit in two departments supplemented by volunteers that also help, and we never proposed to separate the two.
All right, anybody else? Additional language? Anybody wants to add?
Not, we have an ordinance and probably one of the best ordinances I've seen in the last two years. It takes care of this machine that runs so smooth. You know, one of our jobs is to protect the citizens of this community, and we need the personnel to do that, and we just can't keep bringing them in, training them, and sending them off for lack of $2,000 or $3,000. So, I'm fine as 100% Randy, and I think that, I think council... I don't remember a meeting that someone on this council has not complimented fire, police, and the rest of your staff for the job they do. Believe you, Mr. Manager. So I'm excited, this is on the agenda, excited to vote for the ordinance and get a motion will do that.
May I move that we adopt an ordinance making additional appropriations fiscal year 2023 for general fund employee retention pay, public safety market adjustment, and building maintenance.
Second. All right, motion remains second that we adopt the ordinance. Are there any other questions further?
Just one.
Yes, sir.
This, after we raise the pay, ours will still be right at the low side of the surrounding communities.
That is correct.
But it will help.
Absolutely.
Certainly not going to bring it up equal on part.
It will get us closer, but it will not, it will not take us, it won't change what has been our traditional market position, but it'd bring it closer. And as I, as I said before, this may, this is not necessarily the end of having to deal with this, but it is, if you approve it, a mid-year step in the right direction, in my opinion.
Any other comments? If not, Ms. Kim?
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Hucks.
With pleasure, I'm very adamant, aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Thye.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Mayor Hessel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thanks, Kim. Second item of resolution, making appointment to the Planning Commission. Someone have a name? Someone have a name?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution making an appointment to the Planning Commission with the name of Olivia M. Grebel, Western Precinct, whose term will expire November 30th, and that we delay the central meeting in December.
Second?
All right, then motion made, second, we adopt the resolution with Olivia Grebel's name inserted, and we will wait on the other one until December. Any concerns, comments regarding that? If not, Ms. Kim?
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilman Hucks?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Mayor Hessel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thanks, Kim. Item three is a resolution making an appointment to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution making an appointment to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board with the name of Jean Hubbard from the Western Precinct, in certain, whose term will expire March 31st, 2023.
All right, thank you.
Second?
First, may I simply adopt the resolution with the name inserted? Any concerns, comments regarding that? If not, Ms. Kim?
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Hucks?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Mayor Hessel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Thanks, Kim. Item four is a resolution making an appointment to Colonial Behavioral Health Board.
Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution making an appointment to the Colonial Behavioral Health Board with the name of Dr. Dawn M. Id, whose term will expire June 30th, 2023.
Okay. Second? All right, we have motion made, second, we adopt the resolution with that name inserted. Any comments, questions, concerns? If not, Ms. Kim?
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Hucks?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Mayor Hessel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Kim. And this next one will get some votes. Resolution canceling the second meeting of the month, November and December. These are a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution canceling the second meeting of the month of November and December 2022, and invite all of you to come to my house in Louisville meeting.
All right, we have motion made, second, we adopt that resolution. Any comments regarding that? I'm sure there are. So Ms. Kim, please.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Hucks?
Aye.
Mayor Hessel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you, Kim. Let's move on to the comments. The city manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two items this evening. One, I just wanted to take a moment and thank each of you for, for your vote on new business item number one. We are, we are trying our best in this ever-changing post-pandemic world to keep pace, and your action tonight will help us do that. I just wanted to say thank you. And I also wanted to thank Wally and his team, as well as the Planning Commission themselves, for the work on the subdivision ordinance. We've done half of signs, we've done site plan, and we've done subdivision with your vote this evening. So the major one left is zoning ordinance and the other half of signs, if we can get to it. But we did absolutely the most important of the two pieces of signs, in my view. So we've made a lot of progress since you adopted the comprehensive plan on this, and it, it takes a lot of time and a lot of meticulous detail by staff and the Planning Commission. Just wanted to say thank you for that. It's a long time coming and, and much appreciated. That's all I have, sir.
All right. Bud?
Yes, first, I'd like to thank everyone at home and here for paying attention to their city government. I'd also like to thank all the citizens who voted in the last election, okay? And I would especially like to thank the ones who re-elected me, okay? And you heard the city manager talk about the, the stream of employees, out of a pool of employees, a few minutes ago. And the same thing to even more, more difficult extent applies to the applications for the various boards and commissions for the city of Pecosin, okay? We would like to have a pool of candidates for all the boards and commissions, but that's actually not, not the fact. We, there's a stream and trickle of those people that we can appoint to the various boards. And so I really implore all the citizens of Pecosin to pay attention to the government and be willing to step up and do your part to keep this city the fine city that it is. I personally believe, and I think, I speak for the entire council, this is the best place in Virginia or elsewhere to live. But it's going to stay that way only because of the fine employees that we have and the various boards and commissions that help support this board. So I ask you to please apply and serve your time on the various boards and commissions. And I want to thank again the city manager and his staff for doing an excellent job. They continue to do that, you can't thank them enough. It's the hardest working set of city employees you're going to find anywhere in the state of Virginia. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bud. China?
China.
I also like to thank the people that voted and, as Councilman Southall, especially the ones who voted for me. So thank you, everybody, and that's all.
Okay, Keith?
Yes, I'd like to thank the election and polling officials for their work the last Tuesday. It was actually the last 45 days, to include a couple of weekends in there, that they were here in this room and then spread out on Election Day to make things happen. And congratulations to those that were elected. As far as echoing on some of the comments on the boards and commissions, we have numerous ones. I can't remember, I started counting and gave up, with upwards of 70 citizens that fill in the positions of these boards for free at their own time. I've been attending several of the board meetings to see and hear what they do for our community. I think it would be nice to invite them to address the council at their leisure on how they're doing, tell us about their successes, maybe the issues that they're having, challenges, and discuss if there's anything the council can do to assist them. I'm not saying bring them all in in January or something like that, but just to put out the invitation to let them come in and talk to us. I know they're well represented, a lot of them from Wally's office, but other ones, you know, it's just nice to see them, because a couple of them came up to me when I go to their meetings, and they go, you're the first city councilman I've seen. And I'm not poking on anybody, but I wanted to, in front of one of the ones, I got up and said, thank you. And I said, no, you can't say it's a thankless job, because I just thanked you. And, but it pretty much is for those people, and I'd just like to, sympathy goes out to them. Like I said, eight years on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, it's nice to know that someone out there does care, other than once every three or four years.
Okay, Bud?
I'd like to remind everybody that the Pecosin Mobile Food Bank is tomorrow from 10 to 12. Our host this time is York Pecosin Social Services.
Cool. Thanks, sir. Davey?
Thank you, Gordon. I have five groups that I'd like to recognize, so I'll try to be as efficient as I can. In honor of Veterans Day, I'd like to start with that group and remind everybody watching from home and here tonight, we actually have four veterans sitting at the diocese tonight, serving on city council. Mayor Hessel, Vice Mayor Freeman, Councilman Green, and Councilman Fai. And rather than just a simple thank you, I'd like to remind you all that each of you are role models of mine, and I am motivated to do what I do in honor of your leadership, your example, and your sacrifice. So thank you very much. To reinforce Keith's comments about the registrar's office, unfortunately, we are all aware of the horror stories going on throughout the country with the way elections are handled. Fortunately, we don't have those problems here in Pecosin, and that's no accident. It's due to the diligence of our director of elections and registrar, Tammy Pinkney, our assistant registrar, Tara Moore, our electoral board members, Taylor Bresnan, Bonnie Condry, and Lynn Pauls. We have over 40 citizens that volunteer their time and put in a lot of long hours at the polls to ensure that things run smoothly. I'd also like to thank the three churches, well, three of our churches in the community, Tabernacle United Methodist Church, Trinity United Methodist Church, and Emus Baptist Church, who offer their fine facilities to the city to use for elections at no charge to the city. And I have personal knowledge of all three of those churches, and I can highly recommend all three of them for anybody looking for a church own. In addition to those, I'd like to thank our public works and our police department that also support safe and secure elections. And as, as Keith stated, the elector, the registrar's office actually starts preparation for the November election in July, so this is the culmination of four months of work on their part. And with the addition of the early voting, which starts in September, that's been an additional burden that they have dealt with so well. So thanks so much to Tammy Pinkney and her entire staff. Also want to comment and recognize and thank the library staff. Last month, the library received its three-year passport acceptance facility audit from the U.S. Department of State. And I do have a little bit of personal experience when it comes to dealing with government agencies such as this, and an accomplishment of this magnitude is quite remarkable. The final report sent to our library director, Ms. Jessica Hartley, stated, "The inspection results reveal the facility is well organized and demonstrates a solid commitment to a quality passport acceptance program." And it demonstrates that all items on the auditor's checklist passed the inspection. Many thanks to passport agents Christine Zalomita and Jessica Burkhart for guiding the State Department representative through the audit, and to librarian Amy Blow for her continued effort to ensure the passport process application is organized and executed by State Department standards, and all agents are thoroughly trained. The last two groups I'd like to recognize are from Pecosin High School, and since we are so intertwined in this community, I felt like it's appropriate to do so. Over the past few weeks, I've had the opportunity to transport these two groups to their competitions. The first one I'd like to recognize is the Pecosin High School Competition Cheerleading Team, who competed and finished in second place in the regional competition, which qualified them to go to the state competition in Richmond and against very stiff competition from many teams across the state. They placed fifth, which is remarkable. The team's coached by Brittany Giesinger-Anger, who herself is a Pecosin alumni and product of this community. So congratulations to the Pecosin High School Competition Cheer Team for their success. In addition, I'd like to congratulate the Pecosin High School One Act Theater Troop, which is directed by Dr. Amy Ensley. This past Saturday, they actually finished first in their region against some stiff competition, but in my humble opinion, they really set themselves apart and were in a class all by themselves at the regional competition, which qualifies them to go to the state competition next month. Dr. Ensley is also a Pecosin community product, as well as a Pecosin alumni, and my compliments and my thanks to Dr. Ensley and Ms. Alger, being Pecosin alumni who choose to reinvest their talents and expertise in developing today's youth in the community. Congratulations and thank you to, to all those groups.
Okay, Dave, thank you very much. Appreciate you saying all of that. That's important. Anything else? Okay. Mr. Green, you got a turn?
The move, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
All right, motion made, second, we adjourn, Ms. Kim?
Councilman Hucks?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Mayor Hessel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
All right, your turn.